Okay, we will call the Tuesday, April 27th Planning Commission meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda.
Uh, no chairman.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Saylor.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jacob.
Here.
Commissioner Helmar.
Here.
Commissioner Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt.
Here.
Okay, public comments under Government Code 54954.3. Members of the audience may address the commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during the commission's consideration of the item. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on non-agenda items. Do we get um any, any comments or anybody wanting to speak? I don't see any hands raised.
Uh, no, Chairman, we, we did not receive any prior to the deadline.
Okay, perfect. We'll move right along then to the information and consent calendar. We have one item, the approval of minutes from the March 23rd, 2021 meeting. If there's no need for discussion, the chair will entertain a motion. Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does it have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Garza made the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion, motion carries five zero. Moving right along, we have one item under public hearings. Planning Commission adoption of Resolution Number 021P-005, approving conditional use permit application, CUP 21-04, with conditions for the development of a new cannabis cultivation, distribution and manufacturing facility to be located at 1951 Mercantile Lane. Sean.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, uh, tonight, uh, staff is recommending approval of Resolution 021P-005 with conditions for the development of a new cannabis facility at 1951 Mercantile Lane. On the 22nd of March, uh, the development, the Community Development Department received an application for the development of a phased commercial cannabis cultivation, distribution and manufacturing facility in the industrial park at 1951 Mercantile Lane. In accordance with Section 9-5128F of the Klingaplan and Zoning Code related to commercial cannabis operations, a conditional use permit is required as part of the submittal process and approval process for operations as a cannabis operator. In addition, there are new buildings being developed on this vacant site. Therefore, a site plan review is a, is required as well to be for consistency with all applicable zoning regulations. In terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, this application constitute a project in accordance with the California Quality Environmental Quality Act, and staff has prepared an environmental analysis as part of this application. And then, once the application was deemed complete, staff did request comments from the necessary city departments. So, the report, including the resolution and conditions of approval incorporated, have incorporated all of the comments received from the various departments. The manufacturing business light development regulations, uh, there are several development regulations that staff evaluates prior to recommending approval of a conditional use permit and site plan application. The site plan application has been reviewed for compliance with the Plan and Zoning Code and meets all applicable requirements for the proposed use based on type, location and site constraints. So, the project is a phased commercial cannabis facility with, with, that will support cultivation, distribution and manufacturing of cannabis and cannabis products. And it's planned to be developed in two phases. Now, the first phase, uh, which is within year one to two, uh, building one on the site plan, which is for cultivation. The total building square footage is 27,000 square feet with approximately 18,488 square feet of cultivation space with about 8,512 square feet of office space and miscellaneous space. Building two, which is for manufacturing and distribution, that's part of phase one, which is year one and two. The total building square footage is 3,450. Uh, the manufacturing space is 465 square feet. Distribution square, uh, square footage is 300. And then your office space and miscellaneous space is 2,685, which is predominantly for storage, uh, non-secure storage. And then building three, which is for future cultivation, uh, it's phase two, uh, year three, and basically within year three or four, according to the applicant. Uh, that building square footage is expected to be 23,400 square feet, but the commercial space and the office space is to be determined. And what we put in the conditions of approval, because the project is already pretty much cited, it's got a full site plan, it already includes parking based on this square footage, that just an administrative site plan review will be necessary at a staff level to review just elevations and make sure that's consistent with the Plan and Zoning Code. But for the most part, it's really just establishing a footprint for the building, which has been established here, but will require an administrative site plan just to verify that it's consistent with the existing, um, development. In terms of general plan, uh, consistency, the general plan designation at the industrial park is a manufacturing business with a zoning designation of manufacturing and business light. The project proposal is consistent with all the development regulations for commercial cannabis developments in addition to the issuance of a city cannabis regulatory and state permit. Currently, the applicant has a commercial cannabis regulatory permit, uh, application under review at the police department and will soon be brought to the city council for, uh, approval, once the commission has taken action on the conditional use permit. So, in terms of, uh, we've identified some of the surrounding uses. Um, to the north, we have agricultural land, which is the, to the city limits. To the south and west, we have industrial zone property. And then to the east, we have agricultural land as well. Um, in terms of the site plan review, there are four different findings for approval that are necessary when considering an application for a site plan review. Uh, in terms of staff's analysis, um, there are several development regulations that staff reviews prior to recommending approval of the site plan application. And this site plan has been reviewed in compliance with the Plan and Zoning Code and meets all the applicable requirements for the proposed use. In terms of access, the primary access point for the development will be located on Mercantile Lane at the southwest corner of the property. According to the fire department and city engineer, there's adequate space for onsite, um, public maneuvering. Uh, the need for secondary access point is not necessary since it would have a very difficult, a difficult time, uh, to provide an additional ingress egress location without accessing the property from the state highway, which is not necessary at this point. And they're at the end of a cul-de-sac, but there is turnaround space. The way the parking is designed to have circulation, not just a one-way-in, kind of one-way-out orientation. In terms of utilities, um, storm drain runoff, onsite storm drainage runoff, uh, will run to the existing storm drain facilities at Mercantile Lane. Um, gas, water, sewer, all those facilities are available for connection in the industrial park because it's, and basically all the improvements have been completed. In terms of meters, there'll be meters for both water and natural gas, which shall be identified on the final site plan when submitting, uh, to the planning department for final approval. And then there'll be separate landscape meters and land, and domestic meters for the facility as well. So, in terms of parking, uh, in accordance with the, uh, regulations in the zoning code for parking, the parking requirement for this proposed development is one stall for every thousand square feet of building space. The proposed development has met the requirement by providing 62 vehicle stalls, including the future expansion area. The total square footage of all structures is 53,850, requiring 54 stalls. So, the 62 is definitely sufficient for the, uh, the full build-out of this development. And lighting has been provided as required in the Plan and Zoning Code as well. On the final site plan, shade tree shall be provided as required. Uh, one of the requirements is a minimum of one shade tree for every 10 parking spaces shall be provided, which shall achieve 50% canopy coverage of paved area at maturity. The shade tree shall have, um, shall be located and provided visual relief to long rows of parked vehicles and to provide shade to pedestrian connections. So typically, when there's more than 10 parking spauld or 10 or more, it typically requires kind of a little island cut out for that tree. So even with that, it's not going to reduce the parking standard to that of what the, I mean, below the requirement. So, they basically have eight more stalls than they, than they're required. We may lose one to two stalls based on where that, that regulation would kick in in terms of having a series of 10 or more stalls in one particular, uh, run. Uh, the proposed development provides for required refuge containers, and their size, shape and location are consistent with that of the city requirements. The proposed landscaping exceeds the city's minimum requirement for landscaped areas. As it relates to site frontage, parking, highway setbacks and equipment screening, a separate landscape plan will be submitted to the Community Development Department for review and approval prior to building permit issuance. In terms of fencing, all interior fencing shall be a material allowed under the Plan and Zoning Code. All fencing adjacent to public rights away will be a combination of ride iron and landscaping or decorative block material. The heights of the fencing shall not exceed six feet. I think in the application, it did state that it was going to be eight foot. Um, and so it still is to a max of six feet is what the, uh, the fencing requirement is. That's what staff's recommendation is. However, um, if there is any other discussion regarding that, I think that in the past, even since, ironically, this same particular site had, I think, fencing that was higher than six foot, but approved through a CUP would be permitted. However, you know, for consistency throughout the development, you know, as we've known, six foot's going to be just as secure as probably eight feet. The proposed projects locate within 200 feet of the state highway and shall provide a landscaped area at least 15 feet deep between the highway right-of-way and the building or parking area for length of the site frontage facing towards the highway. The property has adequate setback from the state highway, um, right-of-way, which is adequate landscaping. It's got a pretty big buffer between even the property line and the, the ultimate right-of-way. There's a lot of landscaping there. Some applicants have pushed back that 15 foot off their property line because some of them had parking in the back. Um, some have basically just like, in this instance, they bring it up. They have it pretty close to the property line, but there's still that, there's still that landscape buffer between the state highway and the property. In terms of lighting, the lighting's been reviewed and approved by the police department to ensure that there's no spill-over lighting. The police department is recommending as part of the conditions of approval that the site, uh, meet or exceed the standard of 1.5-foot candle of light within the site to ensure adequate lighting. A photometric plan was prepared and reviewed and approved by the police chief. All lighting shall use decorative poles and fixtures with LED technology and avoid HPS, HPS lighting, high-pressure sodium, in an effort to reduce energy consumption. And then obviously with signage, in accordance with the Plan and Zoning Code related to commercial cannabis facility, there's no business-related signage, uh, permitted. However, any kind of federal-related signage such as ADA, parking, you know, directional signage, those things are permitted. In terms of off-site improvements, the applicant shall furnish and install off-site sidewalk, driveway approaches and street lighting on Mercantile Lane frontage as approved by the city engineer. The applicant shall, uh, furnish and install off-site public AC, curb gutter sidewalk and street lighting for the property frontage along Polk Avenue in accordance with the Caltrans construction requirements. And streetlights shall be installed at 150-foot spacing along Polk Avenue, uh, Jane Avenue 33. So, as we look at the conditional use permit analysis, um, the CUP analysis will look at the operational criteria such as security, odor control, hours of operation, et cetera. The regulatory permit reviewed by the police chief and approved by the city council will consider these items in more depth to ensure full compliance with the city's planning and zoning code related to commercial cannabis operations. However, from staff analysis, we look at the findings that are required under a conditional use permit. So, for the project summary, as we talked, it's cultivation, manufacturing and distribution. Cultivation means any activity involving the planting, growing, harvesting, drying, curing, grading or trimming of cannabis. In addition, the cultivation site means a location where cannabis, commercial cannabis is planted, grown, harvested, dried, cured, graded or trimmed, or a location where any combinations of those activities occur. Distribution, the applicant will distribute only cannabis goods. They shall ensure that all cannabis goods are batched, are stored, sorry, batched, are separately and distinctly from other cannabis goods batches on the licensed distributor's premise. And in terms of manufacturing, the applicant intends to operate under a manufacturer volatile license, which uses volatile solvents to manufacture commercial cannabis products for medicinal and adult use. In addition, the applicant proposes to use non-volatile solvents manufacturing products as well as packaging and label and infusions, which is all permitted under a manufacturing license. In terms of security, the applicant's site protection strategy will address all the forms of security concerns and will be required to meet all the security requirements of the Plan and Zoning Code. The police department is currently reviewing the security, uh, plan, including camera placements, access control onsite and perimeter security, um, to meet the requirements of the code and the satisfaction of the police chief. There will be onsite security provided at this site at all times with a minimum with, at a minimum during business hours. All employees, uh, unauthorized personnel will enter the building or buildings at designated entry areas after checking with security personnel at the site entrance, who will grant authorization to the facility. Terms of odor control, in order to control odor while producing at the above capacity and remaining compliant, the facilities will be equipped with both negative pressure and mass filtration systems. Odor control systems will be checked and replaced as necessary to prevent odor from escaping the facilities and becoming a nuisance to the applicant's neighbors. In terms of hours of operation, they're looking at Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM. The estimated employment is 25 employees. Uh, this facility will be accommodated by 62 parking stalls, as shown on the site plan. That number may go up or down based on some of the landscaping standards that may change. Um, in terms of fuel storage and other potential hazardous materials, the applicant will be required to meet with the fire marshal or fire chief and the building official to determine the level of safety protections required based on the desired storage of solvents and all other hazardous materials onsite. Uh, known chemicals and solvents will be used, uh, that will be used, will have to be provided to the fire chief for review and approval. Uh, the applicant is expecting to use about 4.6 acre feet of water for cultivation operation. Uh, this is not expected to affect the city's ability to provide, uh, treated water to the community. Uh, the applicant will not introduce any toxic chemical waste or solvents into the local waste stream and will be required to disclose all products, chemicals, solvents, active ingredients that will be used as part of the extraction and refinement process. Um, and the applicant will be required to utilize the city's solid waste hall or mid-valley disposal for all solid waste needs, including destroyed product, green waste, typical waste and any other cannabis-related products or byproduct where the state of California has authorized franchise solid waste haulers to provide these services. This can, the cannabis operation obviously cannot be within 930 feet, measured from the property boundary to property boundary of any existing school or proposed school site as identified in the general plan. The applicant meets the setback requirement, uh, as amended. In terms of public notifications, on April 15th, public hearing notice were sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the site as required by local and state law. And in terms of the, uh, we, we staff did analysis, uh, in relation to the California Environmental Quality Act and found that the, the project qualifies for Class 32 exemption under SEQA guidelines for infill development projects. We've provided kind of the analysis of how that fits in with that particular project. In terms of fiscal impact, the project will generate cannabis licensing fees and taxes. Uh, the total amount is yet to be determined. Typically, once they submit their cultivation plan to the state for licensing, that document we will review because our taxes are based on canopy. And so we'll be able to fully understand the canopy of each one of those grow rooms that are in the site plan to identify, you know, how much space is actually taxable. And the staff's, and right now, staff is currently working with our, with SCI are consulted on licensing fees. So hopefully in the next month, we'll have licensing fees and those have been deferred until at least July, um, unless we, or until we adopt new, uh, fees. So we'll be bringing those back to the city council when, and then those, those fees will come due for all of our operators. So in terms of reasons for recommendation, uh, we have the site plan, uh, findings for approval, which is the proposed construction alterations are in substantial conformance with the general plan, zoning ordinance and any applicable zones, or plans adopted by the city. The proposed construction alterations conform to the requirements of the applicable zoning districts. The construction alteration conforms to all applicable design standards and guidelines as adopted by the city council. And the construction alteration will not have significant adverse effects on the public health, safety and welfare. And when it comes to the conditional use permit findings, one is general plan consistency, one is neighborhood compatibility and one, and the third one is the asset for the neighborhood. So with that, that's my, that'll conclude my report. I have included a copy of the resolution, application documents and, uh, conditions of approval to the report. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing now for anybody wanting to speak for or against this application. Commissioners, Commissioner Pruitt, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Garza?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Helmer?
Yeah, uh, Sean, did you get any response to the notices that were sent out?
No, I didn't.
Question, Sean, are, are they required to put in sprinkler system in these buildings?
You know what? I can't, I cannot remember. I'm pretty sure they are based on, it just depends on the size and then the, the actual classification for the building. Um, the manufacturing and distribution, I think, have been required to have sprinklers. I'm not sure on the cultivation side.
Do you know if the other one had it in there?
That's the thing I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Do you remember that?
Yeah. I can get back, I can get back to you on that though.
Would the fire marshal then, would he determine whether that would be needed or?
Yes, it would, it would have to be determined based on, um, the, the, the use classic, or the classification of the, uh, building. Um, or the occupancy type, I guess you'd say in building lingo, it's the occupancy type. Um, so they'd make that determination, but I can't recall whether or not the previous projects have had that. I know that's always a question that comes up.
Yeah, and that's a big expense. I know they got some flammables there.
Yeah, there's definitely going to be, for manufacturing, there's, it's a pretty robust engineering job for those, those manufacturing spaces where they have the volatile extraction going on. But yeah, I could follow up with you on that and let you know.
Be curious about it. Is there a set, um, square footage or acreage per plant that the city goes by for whether people are using that much for planning? I don't, I know we tax per plant or whatever from my understanding. And if they were not to utilize it or?
Yes.
How is that monitored or is that calculated?
So typically, um, they'll provide a layout of their cultivation space and that's how they're taxed. So it's based on canopy. So like, um, for indoor cultivation, if you have a, you know, a 3,000-square-foot room and they're going to grow in that 3,000-square-foot room, they're going to provide us a breakdown and kind of show where the canopy of those, those rows of plants will be. So it won't be necessarily 3,000 square feet that we'll tax them at. It may be 2,500 square feet. So there's aisle areas for people to, I mean, basically be able to walk through. I know that I think with some of our projects where they've got like these rolling tables, those, those have a tendency to really maximize the space. So it really depends on that. So we really verify that once with the applicant as we get closer to, um, tying everything up in terms of the building. And then they can provide us that and then we tax based on that and we keep that document. Similar to like for the outdoor grow that's up on the north part of town, even though they're growing on four acres, I don't, we don't charge taxes on four acres. We charge tax on, based on the actual full growth of that plant. So they have an idea of, and we monitor it. So when we go out and do our inspections, we basically see and monitor and if we have to, measure it. And if you've got all the plants kind of overlapping each other and it becomes one big kind of bush, then you know, you may be looking at some, you know, heavier tax or just have that conversation with them in terms of how we address the taxes.
And who would do that? Who, do we have?
Well, it's, uh, we, we have, we have a consultant, SCI consulting, who actually do quarterly inspections at the facilities. Um, and as part of our fee update, we'll have, we'll have options for the council as to whether or not to use our existing staff, like our police officer or even, you know, in terms of those positions, or whether they continue to use the services of SCI for those quarterly inspections.
I saw somebody's hand raised on Zoom, but they took it down. I don't know.
I know that two of, that would be, oh, yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, so, um, there.
There's one, yeah.
Yeah, if you want to unmute them.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, hello.
Hi.
Uh, my name's Ed Roan with Dylan Roan. Uh, we prepared the plans and we will have fire sprinklers.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Sorry, I recognized that name. I know the other two, the other two are the applicant, so they're all applicant then.
Oh, because my name's on there.
Okay, um, there's no need for any further discussion. Uh, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. If there's no need for any further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
Break a motion.
Commissioner Garza made the motion to approve. Commissioner Helmer made the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Garza?
Aye.
Commissioner Helmar?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacob?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
No. Uh, motion carries for one. Saylor voted no. We will move right along to the next portion. Discussion and/or potential action items. Discussion regarding public attendance at Planning Commission meetings.
So I just wanted to update the, uh, the commission. I know you guys may be aware that the, the city council has opened up, uh, the meetings for the public on a limited access, um, due to occupancy levels. The city, uh, I wanted to bring this to the commission's attention because typically if we are going to allow, if the commission so chooses to want to allow the public to come into the meetings, obviously less, less staff show up to the, to these meetings. So there's more available space, um, for these, we're about 15% is what we're, of our occupancy. However, I wanted to bring the attention that it is kind of the chairman or the mayor, in, in either instance, who kind of monitors the, uh, the public as they, when they're here. Not necessarily the actions, but just the, well, obviously running the meeting. But in terms of ensuring that we have the appropriate space. So it's 15%. Um, I can see tonight, they have two, four, six, eight, 10. It's probably enough for about 11 people tonight. It's kind of a first come, first served basis. It's not really something that we have like a scheduling thing where there's, there's a note on the door that tells, that has kind of the rules. And as people show up, they can sit. Um, if there is some instances where we have applicants that would like to attend the meeting, we set priority on anybody who has presentations, anybody that needs to attend as an applicant. And then in that sense, the remaining seats would be available and that would be something the chairman would monitor, um, when, when that occurs. And I would be able to update you on who is, who are expecting to show up from an applicant standpoint. And then also for public comment, we would allow the public to come in. So if they were full, we would allow the public to come in, provide public comment in person and then go. So I know that there was, and I, I'll have to follow up. I, I don't know, I know there was some discussion about how public comment was being administered through Zoom. And I think that public comment either has to be written or it has to be, and Shannon may be able to correct me or provide some light. I hear her maybe pulling up to talk, but, um, I think that basically public comment would either be in person or written prior to, I think, a certain deadline, um, the day of the meeting. So Shannon, do you have any update on that?
Yes, um, the last council meeting, it was announced that, um, we would no longer be having, um, public comment over Zoom. So the last meeting was the last meeting that that was going to be allowed. Uh, moving forward, you would have to submit your written comment to be read prior to the deadline, which is, uh, 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Or you would have to appear in person to make your comment.
So I, I get staff's just seeking direction from the commission. If you guys would like to proceed with that, then we can at least kind of make a announcement if that's the case, just so people are aware that they can come and attend the meetings and then provide them the similar guidance that we've provided the public related to council meetings.
So, uh, how does everyone feel regards to this? Go ahead.
I, it wouldn't bother me at all if people came in here. Um, I've been vaccinated and never been really afraid of this thing, so.
Okay.
But yeah, it's up to you, the rest.
It would be nice if we had people show up. Yeah, I'm, I'm with Jim, I'm, you know, very comfortable.
Okay.
With proper precautions, yeah.
Okay.
I have no problems with it.
Okay.
I think us adopting the same procedures as city council would make it easier for the public. And I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah. So we have, we have agreement. You just needed consensus from us. You didn't need an actual.
Nope, just the consensus.
We have consensus.
We'll just make an announcement. I mean, everything's on the door, so, I mean, it just allows people to, to come if they like to.
Perfect. Alrighty, then moving right along, there's one department report update on Zoom meeting chat feature.
I'll be really brief. It's been disabled.
Thank you. Perfect.
And I think it's been disabled for council meetings as well, so.
That is, that's the easiest thing right there. Perfect, thank you so much. Uh, any staff announcements? Any staff announcements?
Nothing big. I'll try and maybe give an update. I know you start seeing roads being tore up and everything, there's a lot going on. You know, Polk Street's under construction, Sunset's under construction. We're under design with a lot of other projects for trails, and we awarded the bit, we, we opened bids today for the splash pad at Frame Park, so we'll be bringing that to the council probably in hopefully the next council meeting for award. You have a question?
Yeah, how much water is that going to use?
Not quite sure exactly how much. Depends on how much it's used. Everything is on, they're low flows, so it's not like they're just opened up hoses. So they're on pretty low flow. They're almost all misters. They're not even really like full streams of water.
Is it considering, I mean, the drought has not been declared down here yet, but under the circumstances, is that really a good look to have to open up a water feature now is just my question.
I'll defer to the city manager or the council on that. The project's been in the works for about a year, so it's, I think it's one of those things where it's like.
You know what? Once, once, once the drought's been declared, it'll make a good press photo when, when you see that it has to be turned off. Look at just another casualty of the drought, right? So.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's one of those things where it's like a timing thing, right?
Low flow.
Yeah.
That's not using.
It's not expected to use a ton of water. Like I said, they are, they are in low flow. You can control the flow of the water as well, so you can, because they'd say between 15 to 30 gallons permitted, you know, or some depending on how they, how they go.
So Sean, there's a button you hit and then they run for a while and then they shut off.
Yeah, and you can set how long they run for. So I mean, you can set it to run for five minutes or set run, set it for run to one. You can set it to be open at a certain time and close at a certain time. So those are going to be decisions that the commit, the council's going to have to make once it's, once they move forward with it as to how they're going to handle it as we move into a drought. It's just like one thing after another, right? You know, COVID wouldn't allow us to open it, and now that these things are starting, we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Now we're seeing the drought. One of the benefits to us, which is, I mean, great, is that we get Bureau water and we get water from the feds. And we're, we're in a position where we're going to have sufficient water, and we've been doing conservation measures for several years. I mean, our ordinance, our standard conservation measures is three days a week. So I mean, it's, that's, we don't, unless we actually get rid of the ordinance, it's always under standard conservation. So we're never really open five days, seven days a week of watering, and still we're always under that restriction. So we've kind of balanced out our, our water consumption. But yeah, it's, I can see where the comment.
Commissioner announcements. None? All righty, do you think we'll have a meeting in two weeks or?
I think, I don't, I don't think so, but I will, I guess you'll find out.
Yes, we'll find out.
But off the top of my head, I don't have anything, I don't have anything noticed for the next meeting. We do have some applications we're working on. This is an update, Granite has their application in for just the expansion of their mining operation. No, no increase in operation, it's just sheer space where they're digging.
Yeah.
And then also, and we have another facility next door on Mercantile for another cannabis facility as well that we received an application for as well at the old Gazelle location. So we're working on those. And then I'm not quite sure when those are going to be agendized, and then obviously the heritage park, Heritage Senior Facility with the Alzheimer's housing multifamily, we're working on that. I just received the final documents. I needed to kind of get the reports finalized, so we're hoping we'll agendize that in the next month or so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Sean, has there been anything on the Kmart building?
I haven't heard anything on it. Nothing.
And now that it's all back in session, the light at Cambridge, where do we stand with that?
So I had a meeting with the engineer, the city engineer today. The steel industry is delayed like crazy, but we were told that we should be receiving the polls hopefully by the first to second week of June, and it should not take that long. So I'm hoping that by the end of June, barring PG&E energizing it for us, but the polls will be up, I hope, by the end of June, and hopefully illuminated and operational by then. But it shouldn't take long once the polls arrive to, I mean, everything's ready to go. All you have to do is bolt them on. Bolt them on, run the wiring, and it's done. So not a lot of work left. It just seems like it's taking forever to get to that final stretch, so.
Perfect. All righty, well, nothing else, meeting adjourned.